Okay, that's fine. Um, Dr. Fred, I mean-
Kathy, did you get copies of the letters?
Okay, I just wanna chat, I wanna think I just- They were talking so fast, I couldn't just remember. But it was blocked, I couldn't call, thank you for having me. It was a blocked number. Mm-hmm, I sure was. It was going so fast, I didn't get the first number. Okay, I just wanted to let them know I- I did get something. Okay, Lord, I'm okay.
This is Al there. You ready, Rick? You ready on the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We're complete here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Good night, y'all. We're making it here tonight. We have Reverend Fred Preston that's gonna give us the invitation tonight and, um, let us all stand.
Father God, we thank you for your love and your kindness. We thank you for this day. We thank you for our coming together, uh, this evening with the common council, the president, every member of this common council, and all of those that are under the sound of my voice at this moment. We ask that you take control of what's going on here this evening, Lord. Give us- give this council what to do and how to do it. And Father, we give you praise and give you the glory. You said in all thy ways acknowledge you, and you shall direct our path. And Father, we just look to you right now, and we thank you for this council. Bless the council, bless the mayor of this city, bless the law enforcement officers, bless each one of them in a mighty way. And Father, we give you praise and give you the glory for all that you're doing, for all that you're going to do. In Jesus' name we pray. And everyone say, "Thank God."
Thank God.
For the righteousness to the life, and the highest status of the Father, and to the Republic, which has had his own nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deputy Clark, um, Tom, can you please, um, pick it up?
Mr. Scott?
Present.
Mr. Henry Davis, Jr.?
Little cell grad is here.
Mrs. Shay?
Here.
Dr. Fred Furwick?
Here.
Dr. Varner?
Present.
Vice President Dieter?
Present, ma'am.
Mr. Furwick?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Oliver Davis?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Um, our report from the subcommittee on minutes will be done, um, at our next meeting. On the twenty-third, we will have two subcommittee meetings on that one. Our special business announcement representing the city administration will be Assistant Deputy Chief of Staff Brian Polaski. Brian, there he is, thank you. All right? And also, at the conclusion of our meeting, we're to ask you, if you wanna meet with any of the council members, share any comments, if you could wait for us to come down on the floor instead of coming all up here, please. And if you can do that, then that would be great. Um, can you read our resolution of fourteen fifty-four?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana publicly commending Jonathan Burke for his dedicated service as the city's first director of the municipal energy office.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Burke. It says, "A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend publicly commending Jonathan Burke for his dedicated service as the city's first director of the municipal energy office. Whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that its municipal energy office is dedicated to make a positive impact on energy consulting initiatives by focusing on the following key priorities: the new energy, the new transportation efficiency, and innovation of municipal regulations. And recycling no waste management. Whereas the common council further notes such implementation of such initiatives via the municipal energy office that improves overall sustainability, health, and convenience design of the city. And whereas the city of South Bend is currently transitioning from a municipal energy office to a broad office of sustainability, with the foundation of these programs being started and implemented by Jonathan Burke, and he was named the first municipal energy director in two thousand and ten. And whereas some of the many initiatives championed by Jonathan Burke include the development of a plan of a first hydraulic turbine, advancement of the CNG program to support cleaner drilling, promoting cost-effective CNG vehicles, implementing numerous energy-saving projects on several municipal buildings, and generating countless collaborations with the South Bend Committee, School Corporation, Transco, Logan Center, IU South Bend, Green the Bend, and D.C. Magazine. Now therefore, it be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana publicly thanks and honors Jonathan Burke, city's first municipal energy director, who served in this capacity within the city since two thousand and ten. Section two, the common council wishes Jonathan Burke the very best as he embarks upon a new career path as a private sector energy consultant. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its adoption by the council and approved by the mayor. At this time, I'd like to hear, um, uh, our Jonathan Burke.
Thank you, thank you very much. I did compare and compare the comments with the one on the heart. Um, President, uh, Pastor David Davis, former of the council of, um, and we really appreciate the time you've taken to give us a commendation tonight, and, uh, to the mayor, Speaker Mayor Neal, and, uh, Deputy Mayor Rubs, Deputy Mayor, um, Lambs, thank you for taking the time to prepare this stuff. Uh, you mean the law commander, very touched, thank you. The energy office was established as, uh, as David said, in two thousand and ten, established under an energy grant from the Department of Energy, uh, which paid for the office for two years. I'd like to thank, uh, here's a lot of people not here, and, uh, former mayors, uh, Licky, for giving me the opportunity to serve the city's capacity. And, uh, phenomenal, three and a half years. It's often hard to get things done in the municipal setting, but we've been able to drill them with the ball for to get a lot of good things done, and very rewarding, and thank you for your support on that. Um, the energy office was modeled after, uh, the, uh, Ann Arbor Energy Office. And they saved a phenomenal seven million dollars over their first ten years. The hope of South Bend officials when they set up an energy office was to be able to take their savings. I'm very happy to report to you that we not only naturally saved, we amassed about a seventeen million dollar ten-year benefit to the city in the first three and a half years. So, uh, that's something that we feel very good about. Uh, I didn't do it alone, I had a team. About six months into, uh, my tenure here, was able to add, uh, staff on the Johnson field. Very, uh, very helpful in implementing projects. I'm more of a big picture person, she was on the ground implementing projects, and did a very nice job. And also, uh, in two thousand and eleven, we had a financial analyst, we seen this through the past few years, sixty-six utility accounts, and it made sense of all of them, compiled all the data. And we, uh, put them into the utility tracking system to give us the ability to, uh, for the first time, uh, actually benchmark our energy use and compare our energy use to one year from the other. In two thousand thirteen, we were able to see a significant reduction in our expenses. So that's another, uh, great, uh, uh, product. So, that was the team approach, but I can't, uh, go along without acknowledging my life. Kathleen's a main cheerleader here at the school, so all of us, uh, Kathleen was, uh, one of my main cheerleaders and source of support, and, uh, she clearly is one of the ones who united us, so thank you Kathleen. Uh, I'd like to talk about the new team that's here, uh, Teresa Vorel and Krista Bailey. I knew Teresa, uh, I actually worked with her when she was with the Department of Energy. Uh, we helped, uh, implement the era grant. I didn't know that she was coming to South Bend one day, but she is here. And I know Krista Bailey was also in the new sustainability office. Uh, for the whole time I've been here, I think I might have heard of her, Taylor's in South Bend. Both of these ladies have tremendous amount of energy and passion for sustainability. I know that they will make difference in South Bend. Uh, the one thing, uh, that they will need is your support and your encouragement. The work, uh, whether it's energy work or sustainability work, one of the biggest things in that, in that role is the town convention. The founding convention today, and today I'm asking people to do things differently, to look at things a little differently. Sometimes that's successful, other times it's not. So, they will need, uh, the support of the church, the mayor's team, and I'm, I'm certain that they will get it. And I know that they will make difference in the city. So, um, that's, um, that's brilliant, but have you watched, uh, have you listened to what you're saying here?
Thank you. Um, I was on the Green Ribbon Commission that, um, ushered in the energy office. And I'm, um, I've been a part of the cookies of all the citizens, um, initiated. Um, one of the most exciting ones was the installation of the, um, two kilowatt hydrogen generator, um, on the east race. And Oliver asked me to play on some of the other things, um, Jonathan and his team, uh, that collaboration with the Green and the EBIT7, the Southern School Corporation, um, their sustainability and environmental studies program. Um, I think I'll keep on that board with them, um, the CNG, um, trash trucks, as well as potential, um, CNG transportation, um, emergency. I know he's really very proud of all these accomplishments, and, um, I thank you for these commendations. He's very helpful to us.
Thank you. We'll now like to hear thoughts from the council, thoughts from Councilor Scott. Working our way over to Councilor's side.
Jonathan, thank you so much for all the work you've done and in your service, I really appreciate it. And, uh, we have not forgotten about you, um, my boss and I were just talking about you not too long ago. Um, I work in a green environment and green company, and, um, thinking outside the box, for lack of a better term, just goes a long way, and we're thinking, we're doing a lot of that. We're gonna need your help on some more, so, uh, thanks for the conversations that we've had, and thank you for what you've done for the city, you know. Every time I turn around, it's like, hey, can we put another water turbine in? You know, uh, I would love to do more of that, um, and, uh, in fact, at work, we're, we're actually looking at solar on one of the buildings, and, um, we're just continuing to do that. And you'll be hearing more from me, but I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
It's, it's a bit, bit of sweet, I, you know, you start something, y'all, and say, "Oh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an end day, too, it's nothing lasts forever." But Jonathan, when you first came in, we immediately went to work, you know, we got on the CNG project, we got with Century Center to, you know, put them on the energy savings cost program, and we also got the lights started at Charles Black and, you know, Martin's Key Recreational Center. So we immediately, you know, obviously had the same, uh, frame of thought, and, uh, getting this community on to a different level, different playing field. Uh, I think you're a workspree for itself, and I, and I thank you for the time that you were here. Only wish that you could stay a lot longer, but obviously that's not in our control. But, uh, you're a good man, and Kathleen, hi, and, uh, I look forward to working with you in the future, really do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Jonathan, uh, we're very lucky to have had you help us here in the city, and I understand how difficult it at times it can be to challenge the status quo. Um, but we're very grateful that you, um, came here and taught us so much about, uh, conservation and energy efficiency, and, um, the passion that both you and Kathleen bring to this very important issue. So thank you so much for your service.
Jonathan, Kathleen, come around the corner here. I've had, I had the pleasure to meet with Kathleen and Jonathan many Sunday mornings at eight o'clock at, uh, twenty-three and I would Martin's at the, uh, Starbucks. And, uh, I've asked Jonathan and Kathleen both to educate me. Uh, I tried, uh, last time I talked about Bernoulli's Equation was nineteen sixty-eight, and Jonathan tried to teach me, and I, I think I'm too old to learn it again. And Kathleen also taught me, she's in charge of Greening the Bend, by the way, which has done a magnificent job. Uh, they live in a great community out in Walnut Grove. I've had the opportunity to meet his parents and his friends, and he brings the same common sense that his father does. And I would like Jonathan to comment, he educated me a couple weeks ago. I, I'm, I, even though I did farm work as a kid, I never knew what a chilled plow was, an Oliver chilled plow. Why was that so great? So Oliver, I mean, uh, Jonathan educated me on why the Oliver plow, the chilled plow, was so much better than any other plow before that. Jonathan, would you give that explanation?
It was named Oliver.
Certainly, uh, the, uh, the, Oliver developed a process that, uh, it was a process to cool metal. It cooled it in such a way that the bubbles did not remain within the metal. So when you polished the metal, it made a very mirror-like shiny surface. And when that was, uh, put in the ground to turn over a furrow, the, the soil would fall away from it as it was turned. So that was a revolutionary development, and that's one of the things I love about South Bend, is we are innovators. And Oliver changed the course of agriculture worldwide. And, and I love that story because that's what we're about here in South Bend. We are innovators, and we can change the course of the world by, through our innovation, through our energy and our innovation, so.
Thank you, and again, uh, you and Kathleen are great, great spokespeople for, uh, South Bend. I look forward to consulting with you in the future, Jonathan, and Kathleen.
Thanks. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, President. Uh, I'm really glad you made a point of challenging convention. I'm also glad you made the point that some people receive it well and other people, people receive it not so well. Because I think, going forward, uh, whether it is energy, uh, whether it is how we handle wastewater, whether it is how we finance this or that, convention sets us up for a lot of bad decisions. And if we aren't willing to challenge it, seek other decisions, to seek, uh, opinions from other people, we, we fall into that same convention, and we repeat those same mistakes, and unfortunately, repeat the bad ones all through all. I appreciate your willingness, you have got a good face, pace for the person, for the office, because I think people find you easy to talk to and easy to discuss circumstances with. Which probably makes challenging convention a little bit easier. Uh, I guess, I'm not sure this is accurate, but I believe that turbine that was installed had been laying in a, in a stor- uh, stor- storage area. The great fanfare, the city of South Bend acquired this turbine, because we were gonna use it to generate power, uh, from the east race. We received the grant, and promptly put it in storage, and there it sat, seventeen years. Uh, I don't know how Mr. Burke became apprised of the circumstance, but he saw the value of getting the job done. And through his efforts, that job got done, and, uh, I, I, I appreciated that effort as much as anything, because I remember the great fanfare, that, that came with that, and yet we never had a chance to benefit from it, and now we are, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice President Dieter?
You guys don't have, you can come out. Uh, thank you for all of the great work you've done in South Bend. Um, I'm still not convinced about the alternative fuel for the police cars, but all the conversations and everything. Uh, good luck in your new- I've got the fourth, right?
That's a great comment.
Good luck in your new career, and you guys are both fantastic people, you've done a lot for the community, and I appreciate all the time that you put in.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for the foundation you've laid for the energy office moving forward.
Jonathan, as the first director of the energy office, we could not have had a better person. You've set the standard high, a standard of excellence, a standard of passion, and most important, a standard to challenge status quo and business as usual. So we appreciate all of your hard work and the work of your wife as well. Uh, the energy office is better because of you, and we wish you, um, Godspeed in your new position.
Thank you. Who do we adopt as, like, acclimatizing? Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Let us all stand.
The second Greening the Bend Ball is August twenty-third, by the way. Well, we need to attend it.
Report from the city office. Um, Deputy Mayor Neal, would you like to share a few thoughts with us tonight?
Thank you. All is being here.
Thank you, Council President Davis, and, uh, good evening, council. First, I would just like to offer my congratulations and thanks as well to Jonathan Burke. Uh, we talk a lot about, uh, green initiatives, uh, it's really kind of a double green. We like them to be good economics, sane, good for our environment, and I know John has been focused on that for, since he's, since he's come to the city, and, and we've all been beneficiaries of that and his passion, so I just wanna thank him as well. I just have a couple of items I want to, uh, note this evening. Uh, first, just to confirm that the Jefferson Streetscape projects will begin later this week. So we had an open house, uh, this afternoon at Howard Park, uh, to show the plans, uh, again, to the community, and, uh, the work will begin later this week, so we'll see the, uh, our work on, uh, Complete Streets, beginning on, on Jefferson Street, uh, soon, with an expectation should be completed, uh, in October of this year. Uh, in addition, I want to highlight that, uh, tomorrow at, uh, the Public Works, uh, meeting, they'll be opening up bids for the, uh, conversion of William and Lafayette Street from one-way to two-way, so we'll see that tomorrow, and I know that we're looking to move that forward promptly as well, again, still part of our two thousand and fourteen Complete Streets initiative. Uh, finally, just wanna highlight, uh, Back to Work Week. Uh, there's a number of events this week, uh, again, part of the green initiative of the city, it's a zero-carbon activity. It's also just another great opportunity for, I think, people in the community to come together. The Sal Grill tomorrow for bikers has, uh, free organic pancake breakfast from seven to nine a.m. I'll be showing the movie Breaking Away Wednesday at six at the State Theater. There are other events on Mission on Bike to Work, including, at the end of this week, on Saturday morning, a chance to ride the new section of thirty-one, US thirty-one, south of the city. The one and only time that that'll be available for folks, I think, to about twenty-five miles, that you can ride your bike completely unimpeded by traffic and enjoy a very smooth road. So just wanna highlight, uh, the city's efforts, I thank the council for your support as well, uh, as we continue to make, uh, the Complete Streets a reality here in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, you- Maybe, maybe, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Council President, uh, Davis, uh, in light of the fact that there are no public hearings or third readings, you do not need a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
I appreciate that, I always appreciate that. All right. Then, I'd like to ask, uh, Deputy Clark, Tom, to have a quick reading on bill number thirty-four dash fourteen.
First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at south, the southeast corner of Meadow and Longardi, sixty-four plus or minus acre size, Councilman of District Number Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Um, do we need a motion to move that to area plan?
Yes.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say aye, sir. It is carried. Under unfinished business, any business that comes before the council tonight that has been unfinished. Saying none, any new business that comes before the council. Saying none, you now move to our floor. Um, would like for our city attorneys, could please share if they're with, uh, privilege of the floor?
Uh, privilege of the floor is the, uh, time of the council where, uh, you may give, uh, comments up to three minutes each, uh, for a total of thirty minutes on any item that is not listed on the council's agenda. And the official timekeeper is First District Councilmember Tim Scott.
Thank you. Now we will begin, please.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to raise the time, uh, from, uh, three to four minutes.
Second.
Is it been a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, is now four minutes. That's general, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Please state your name.
I'm sorry, Theodore Robert, um, I reside at two-six-one-seven Ferguson Street, South Bend, Indiana. Councilpersons, um, thank you for the extended time, but there's a matter that I want to present, that we want to present before you that will take a little bit more than four minutes, approximately eight minutes, to, to read the statement to you, and I would ask that the council grant us, um, eight minutes to just read this.
Is it possible that you have two people do it?
Um, no, it would, it's sort of, it would break the, um, I guess, the flow of information. But we would be as quickly as possible.
I don't mind. Make a motion?
Motion of extending, Mr. Theodore Roberts, to eight minutes.
Second. All in favor, say aye? Um, all opposed. You have eight minutes, sir.
Thank you. Dear councilmembers, we are here today for several important reasons. As our elected officials, we want to make you all aware of the significant issues we are, which are occurring within the police department. It is sad to say that these significant issues are unjust. In addition, we are here to inform the citizens of South Bend of these issues because they are vital to the welfare of our community. During the course of last year, there have been multiple incidents of gross misconduct committed by the Chief of Police Ronald Teachman and Mayor Buttigieg. We want to present, you, the council members, the media, and the citizens of South Bend, formal copies of our complaints against Mayor Buttigieg and the appointed police chief Ronald Teachman. Within these complaints, we will explain the various acts of misconduct committed by Chief Teachman and the state and federal laws broken by Mayor Buttigieg. The seriousness of these acts of misconduct includes civil rights violations in the form of racial discrimination, employment discrimination, violations of the South Bend Police Department Duty Manual, abuse of power, ethics violations, unfair treatment, the creation of hostile working environments, employee harassment, and conduct on becoming an officer. It appears that Mayor Buttigieg has given Chief Teachman carte blanche within the police department. Unrestricted power, unconditional authority, and the act, and then, I'm sorry, and the authority to act at his own discretion. In short, Chief Teachman has been given the clearance for Mayor Buttigieg to run amok within the police department. As a result, we accuse Mayor Buttigieg of being in gross neglect of his duties to allow Teachman to continue with this unreasonable and impersonal behavior. All department heads are chosen and overseen by the mayor. The mayor should be aware of, be aware of the actions and conducts from his appointed personnel. If the mayor is not aware of what is going with his appointed personnel, then he is neglect of his duties. If he is aware of the injustices committed by his appointees and does nothing, then by default, he is in support of their behavior. Either Mayor Buttigieg has no clue what Chief Teachman is doing, or he supports these unjust acts committed by Chief Teachman. Recently, there was a meeting held by the FOP, and during this meeting, there was an issue brought up regarding new positions created within South Bend Police Department by the police chief. The officers who received the promotions of these newly created positions are not in question, but the method by which it was used to create these, um, positions. These positions were created by the chief of police without approval of the Board of Public Safety. As a result, these new positions were not open for a competitive bid to other police officers. There is no place in the South Bend Police Department Duty Manual that gives the chief of police the authority to create new positions. There is no place in the duty manual that speaks of executive privileges or executive orders. In fact, the word discretion is mentioned approximately thirty-five times. Only six times does the word discretion apply to the chief of police. There is no place that gives him authority to go beyond his scope of duties that are specifically outlined in section two oh two of the South Bend Duty Manual. This is just one example of the arrogance and untouchable attitude that is demonstrated from the chief of police. The writing has been on the wall for a long time. Remember when our mayor failed to discipline Chief Teachman due to the incident which occurred at the King Center, although several members of the Board of Public Safety requested discipline, including the resigned, um, chairperson, Pat Katrelle? The mayor responded by saying the chief of police and all his appointees are his responsibility. During the King Incident, a second complaint was filed against Teachman for misconduct, for using his position as chief of police to interfere with a state investigation. Mayor Buttigieg and the law department did not attempt to investigate that complaint, yet they only attempted to cover it up. Prior to Teachman being appointed as police chief, Mayor Buttigieg was aware of the fifty-five open internal affairs cases left by Teachman when he left the New Bedford Police Department in two thousand and eleven. The South Bend Police Department received letters from Teachman's former coworkers. Included in these letters, it states, "Teachman caused great dissension with, with his subordinates due to his condescending and arrogant attitude." It goes on to say that Teachman lacks good leadership qualities. One letter received says morale was at an all-time low when he was chief. We can relate to that right now, okay? High-ranking officers within the force, the New Bedford force, said these opinions were echoed throughout the New Bedford Police Department. In addition to- In addition to the fifty-five open internal affair cases, there were nine active discrimination cases that were filed against Chief Teachman. It appears that Teachman just picked off where he left off in New Bedford. This is the person Mayor Buttigieg selected as the best qualified candidate to lead the South Bend Police Department. As concerned citizens of this community and as employees of the city of South Bend, we are requesting that the South Bend Council initiate a complete and thorough judicial investigation into the office of the mayor regarding unethical conduct and neglect of duty and violation of state and federal laws committed by Mayor Buttigieg. In addition to the formal complaints filed against Teachman that we're going to give you today, we as citizens of South Bend and employees of the city of South Bend, we're requesting that Deputy Mark Neal, effective tomorrow, June tenth, relieve Chief Teachman of his duties as chief of police, and place him on administrative leave until an exhaustive and thorough investigation is completed against his acts of misconduct. We request that an exhaustive and thorough investigation into these acts of misconduct not be completed by the city of South Bend's law department, but instead by an outside agency such as the Indiana State Police and the Indiana Human Rights Commission.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. Should these investigations find that Chief Teachman committed acts of wrongdoing, we request that the mayor or deputy mayor terminate Chief Teachman for his acts of misconduct. I thank you.
Next person, you have four minutes?
Yes.
Four minutes before everybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next.
My name is Sammy Brown. I represent Citizens United for Better Government. And there was quite a report. And I come to these council meetings, not tonight, but I come quite often. And our city's unraveling. We got unrest in the police department. We got police tapes that haven't been released to the public, because we had spent our purse of billion dollars, not counting man-hours, that been spent on that. The citizens haven't got their just dues. We want to hear what's on those tapes. But once again, when you hide something, when you hide it in a closet, when you hide it in a rug, eventually, it's going to come out, whether it's in the police department or whether it's in the mayor's office. No matter what it is, it's going to come out. So it's up to the council, which look after the interests of the public, to help bring some of this stuff forth. I mean, I know you guys say, well, that ain't our problem. Yes, it is. Everything we bother in this city, the citizens have voted, you people, to represent us. And we're not getting our money's worth. So I hope that in the future, you take a few minutes and remember that you are representing the citizens of South Bend, because you got a vision on the council. I sat down on a meeting today, and all I could do was shake my head. You know, you got to come together on that council before you can serve the people that you represent, each and every one of you. Y'all can look at me like I'm crazy or you want. Everybody's in there, they got their agenda, not for all the people in the city. Thank you, bye.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Pastor Mario Sims. I'm spokesperson for People United for Better Government. My church is located at six oh-eight South Saint Joseph Street in South Bend, Indiana. We are a citizens' watchdog group. We were formed to ensure people are informed about the works and the functions of government. Of course, this is supported by the First Amendment, and we are here, our membership are here, in support of the officers that spoke today. We also in support of the officers that, for whatever reason, probably because retaliation, chose not to speak today. The first thing that we want to make to the administrations, we'll be watching very closely to make sure that these officers spoke or not, to be subjected to any sort of retaliation. The police department is our first line of defense. We, as citizens, need to listen very carefully when police officers come before this council, risking promotions to express in a very knowledgeable and a factual manner their issues and concerns. We ourselves have been before the council several times. We recently had a March for Justice to bring the attention to the citizenship, the issues that have confronted this council and this city. The city's at a crucial point right now. We look towards the leadership of this council to begin seriously considering not only the issues that have been brought to you by the citizens, but now by law enforcement officers. We have noticed officers who've complained about being threatened by senior law enforcement officials, who were disciplined for complaining about being threatened. That should not be. We had the president of the Public Safety Board who had to resign in frustration because a state police investigation had been submitted to the mayor, and not only was it never publicly released, which is an outrage in itself, considering that the people have a First Amendment right not only to be informed, but also to understand the functions of government, which also speak on those functions. You can't do that if you don't have access to information. This is a point that every American citizen, not black, not white, not Hispanic, not yellow, not Asian, not anything, but every American citizen should be outraged at this administration, what's happened over the last couple of years, the fact that now police officers are complaining. I've been in South Bend for a long time, and I can tell you, I haven't heard police officers complain publicly about their police chief. Something needs to be done. We're here today asking you
One minute, sir.
That you do something, that you listen to the cry of not only the civilians, the citizens, but also those men and women who place their life at risk every day for us. All they ask for is equal opportunity, to be treated fairly, and to be in a position that they can do their job and know they're going to be promoted fairly. We again ask that you support the Civilian Review Board. We'll continue to monitor the situation with these officers, and if necessary, we'll be back to support them again. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. President Davis, you're sixteen minutes late. Okay, thank you.
My name is Coleman Neech Wheeler, and I'm standing here as not only a member of People United for Better Government, but I'm also a citizen, and I reside at twelve forty Van Deuren Street, South Bend, Indiana, located on the west side of town. A lot of people wouldn't stand up here because of the fear of being retaliated on by the police, but I'm taking a stand, a life sacrifice, because I witnessed it. Not only did I see it, but it played a role in my household when my sixteen-year-old son was convicted of a murder that he did not commit. The racism that was treated towards my family and my children during the time of trial, I believe everything that these officers said, and I stand behind them one hundred percent. When you speak on as a citizen, and what they've been denied of is their rights as our own law enforcement officers, well, what about the citizenship complaint form that they are denying us, which he's the chief, so he takes the blame, because this is his fight, this is his police department, and he has denied, or they have been denying, citizens their rights to file their complaints against the police officers. We have witnessed, and you can also go back to tape, where you witnessed me walking in there, asking for them. If you want the dates and times and videos and all that, you can go look it up. Well, I went in there, asked for my citizenship complaint form, and they denied me of it, not only for my son's case, but very actors of wrong convictions made by the South Bend Police Department. So I stand behind these officers. I'm not scared as a citizen to stand up and work his way, and I'm asking justice for my son, and I'm asking for him to be removed out of seat.
Next.
I'll address each and every one of you, and especially those in attendance.
Do you think you name an editor?
Melvin Townsend, three thirty Manchester Drive.
Thank you.
It appears to me, listening to Officer Robert, Pastor Mario, Coleman Neech, that perhaps the problem lies up there, because you guys, and I'm, no offense to you, young lady, you know this stuff is going on, but yet you don't address it. We have to bring it to your attention. That makes no sense, for you to be an elected official and just as blind as the mayor when it came to the description of the mayor's knowledge from Officer Roberts. I'm appalled that you can sit there and only have decency to look out because you have to be here. There's a time for a change, and you guys, this council, you need to get it together because you're ruining the city. Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Just kind of echoing the sentiments, you know, there's a lot of things here that are not happening properly. The chief's had so many things brought up. I mean, I brought documents to the police department, filed a case for fraud. The chief finally talks to me on the phone, wants I can fund him, and then he maders my head out, and tells me that he turned it over to the city's legal department, and that he could waive criminal charges and handle this fraud as a civil matter, and that's what he would like to see happen. My opinion, his job is to look into the criminal end of it and to prosecute. That's part of the problem we got is people not doing their jobs. I handed that gentleman documents to prove that this fraud was going on. I tied it up in a bow, and he refused to do anything with it. So I had no choice but to file a state police investigation. So I will say, I have to agree, this man was brought here for whatever purpose, but it sure was not to do a job as a police officer or as a chief of police, because he doesn't seem to want to do that. I went to a public board of safety meeting and brought it to a public board of safety, and the chief tried to call me out as a liar, said, "Mr. Davis, our conversation didn't go that way." Well, I'm not shy with words, and I looked in bed in my eye and said, "Chief, you're the liar. Our conversations recorded, and it happens to be on my YouTube page, and anybody in the room could listen to it." I don't come up here and say, "Well, I don't know," but I will come up here and tell you the way it is, and I'm not politically correct, but this man was brought here for an agenda of a reason. He needs to be gone. Look at his past. I looked his past up. He shouldn't have never been here to begin with, and he has no ties here, so send him packing.
My name is Gary Wees. I'm here on an entirely different issue. I represent the, I guess, the bar and club owners in South Bend, and we all received letters that there are going to be some meetings held. I can probably tell you that we've already held most of those meetings. We've spoken at this point to a good number of the Mishawaka bar and club owners. We've spoken to a good number of the Mishawaka common council members, the county council members, county bar and club owners, and it seems to us pretty crystal clear that neither of those are interested in moving any further on a smoking ban other than what the state of Indiana already mandates. And so what that means for us is that if you proceed any further with this ordinance, you would be doing exactly what we've been afraid of, and that is isolating the bars and clubs that are in South Bend. Now, I just want to mention that the Evansville smoking ban was overturned by the state Supreme Court on the issue of unfair advantage. The Indianapolis smoking ban is being contested right now based on that same issue. If this ordinance were to pass in South Bend isolating the South Bend bars and clubs, I can't imagine anything that that isn't an issue of unfair advantage on a much larger scale, actually, than either of the other two. If that were to happen, I just want you to know that we are absolutely prepared to take this further, and we are absolutely prepared to take this all the way to the state Supreme Court if we have to. We won't be put at an unfair advantage. That isn't fair to us. We've told you this before, and I don't know, it just, it doesn't seem that it matters to you, it doesn't seem that our South Bend businesses are important to you. I took this issue to the South Bend mayor's office, and the deputy mayor got up and supported the ordinance, which leads us to believe that maybe the mayor's office doesn't particularly care about our businesses either, but we do. That's something that is very important to us, and we don't want our businesses devalued because of this ordinance. If this can't be implemented the right way, then it shouldn't be implemented at all. Thank you.
I'm manager of the City Limits Lounge, eighteen oh seven South Ironwood. Gerald started this business
Stand up, hold up.
Forty years ago, the same owner, same place. He's paid his taxes, every license we always get, and now, if you pass this, our customers are already saying, because we, on one side of the street is South Bend, the other side of the street is Mishawaka, they've already said, hey, you know, we're not coming over here, we're smokers, we're not coming over here. I, for one, I'm not a smoker, but I have worked for forty years in the service industry, and I think people like us pay our taxes and buy our city licenses and everything for forty years. Now, you will close by the end of the year if you pass this ordinance. Thank you.
My name's Don Kelly. Excuse me. I own Kelly's Pub, eleven fifty Mishawaka Avenue. If you do pass this, we will go out of business. There's no way, and at my age, I'm too old to do anything else or to start anything else. I guess my question is, if we do lose twenty-five to forty percent of our focus, who's responsible for that? It wouldn't be us, so it has to be you. And do we get anything back, like Kohl's Stadium or Football Hall of Fame or Union Station or anything like that? We're just at a loss here. We're just trying to finish out our lives, and you're not going to let us do that. Thank you.
Could you check the recordings? Some of that stuff can record.
I own Lani's Twenty-three End Bar on Ferry Avenue. The last meeting, I was really upset. You're sitting here acting as if you're the most in new main people in the whole wide world, and at the same time, I sat and watched babies lay against their mother's shoulders because they were too tired, they should have been in bed, but they're the ones, they're saying that I am doing wrong. Or the people that stood up here and said they had talked to all of us and lied. This is what we're facing, for you to take my life away from me, and you will be taking my life. It is wrong. These are adults deciding their own choice to do this with a legal substance. We will go under. You are going to lose too, because you're going to lose revenue. Who's going to pick it up? The homeowners again? The homeowners again? Higher taxes? Somebody will. You, you have got to really think about what this is as far as not just a health problem. Friend of mine was talking to one of the directors of the funeral hall, and he said, "He said, 'My business is booming.'" He said, "But it's not from older people smoking. It is from children dying, overdosing, committing suicide." Where do you want to spend your time now? I'm sure you don't need to waste it on us. Let us have our rights. Do not take this away from us. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak before the council tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.